The other one was sort of all closed and everything lines up.
Yeah, if we get everything we want.
Yeah.
The tip thing?
I see.
No. No, he was. I'm passing him by.
Welcome everyone, call this February 22nd Commissioners Meeting to order if you'll stand and join me with the pledge and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our county, our state, and our nation. We ask that you give us guidance and wisdom, making good decisions that would be pleasing unto you for our county and our government. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of previous meeting. And if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Have Commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims. And if so, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll. And if so, do I have a motion?
I will make the motion to accept payroll as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Reports, we have a month's report for weights and majors, Henry County Treasurer's Office, and an informational letter from IDIM for wastewater treatment plant for the town of Shirley. Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion to accept the report as presented.
I second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Let's see. Now we have food and beverage claims. We have project number forty-one is Little League for thirty thousand dollars to ML Taylor Construction. Joel, do I have to do these individually? Can I just do them all at once?
Yeah, you can do them all at once.
Okay.
Just read what they are and then the motion to accept all four of these different claims.
Okay. I have one for project number fifty-six, day of carrying match reimbursement for sixty-one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents to Hope Initiative. Project number fifty-three is for the Henry County Veterans Museum reimbursement for office renovation for eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents. Project number forty, which is affidavits for thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five for the Galaxy Concrete Coatings, for six thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars, Quality Fabrication of Indiana, fifty thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, and Pritchett's Backhoe Service for nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents. Do I have a motion to accept these claims?
So moved.
A second.
Motion is proven second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Corey Murphy's not here. Penny? Josh?
Okay, so I know one of the things we're gonna do tonight is talk about the steel proposal that we've met on a couple of times. I don't know how in-depth you want me to go at this point, or if you have open questions, since, you know, we talked about it at the last public meeting and then had the, the special session where we went through and did the demo. So you want me to?
I don't have any questions.
I don't say.
Okay. You might want to just describe what it is and?
Yeah, so it is, you know, we've, since COVID, we've been doing our open enrollment and new hires in a pretty basic online system. We kind of got forced into a free system that we have a license for. And with the complexity of your classes and different thing, employment classes and retirees and all the twenty-five or so, however many different employment classes you have, and some of the other things going on, it's just, it, it is, that system is probably not equipped to do some of the things we needed to do. So we were able to go out and one of our partners, Steel, who enrolls, I think, thirty counties right now on their system, and sixty-five percent of the schools in the state, to put together a proposal, about five thousand of the proposal is you're already spending somewhere else, like on ACA reporting and the connection fees with E's with the current system. And then we were able to get a minimum guarantee of four thousand in tech subsidy from Guardian. So, I mean, off the top, we know it's gonna be a minimum of a nine thousand dollar subsidy on a ten thousand dollar, nine hundred, nine hundred dollar system. I think it's pretty likely we'll probably get the other nineteen hundred covered too. And this will be a net zero cost, but we've got nine thousand of it guaranteed at this point of the ten-nine. So, a worst case, it costs you nineteen hundred dollars to have the system, I think it's gonna be zero. But, so you have the proposal that kind of nets some of that out. So happy to answer any questions. Connectivity-wise, it's for these ladies over here. It'll connect to all your carriers, and it'll be a single entry, like an open enrollment, new hires. That person will make the change in the system, that feeds out. And you can do a lot of other things with the system that, that aren't necessarily benefits related, like saving employee information and other things in the, in the system, so.
So if we don't get the nineteen hundred, we take it out of your commission, right?
Yeah, we'll figure that out. I'm pretty sure we'll get the nineteen hundred, so I'm not too worried about it.
All right. So we need to take any action on that?
I will make the motion to, sorry, turning my ringer off. Make a motion to accept the steel proposal for benefits with the, hoping that we get it down to zero, but at least we've got the nine thousand down to nineteen hundred. So I make the motion to accept it.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Yeah, one way I know we'll get the nineteen hundred and maybe even more than that, where we can make this actually a positive. And I don't think we need to talk about this tonight, but the system we need to get going because of the build time, you know, we can talk again about the consolidation of some of those voluntary products to make everybody's life easier too, but that should be able to drive some more subsidy as well. So we can revisit that in the next, next few weeks. But I want to make sure we officially got build going on all this so we can hit open enrollment time. Uh, the second thing is, so when the federal government implemented the high deductible health plans, or the HSAs, years and years ago, under George W. Bush, they set minimums to be able to contribute to a health savings account, minimum deductibles. And those were set at that time forever to index up for inflation what the minimums are. And so we started with a twenty-five hundred single, five thousand family. And a few years ago, those inflation numbers caught up with us, and we had to bump that single from twenty-five hundred to twenty-eight hundred. And for two thousand twenty-three, that number is going up to a minimum of three thousand on the single deductible. So to comply and make your employees eligible for health savings accounts, we need to, at our June renewal, bump that up to three thousand from twenty-eight hundred, or we're gonna have to look at some other kind of plan changes. So you don't have to impact the family deductible. In fact, last time, we left that at five thousand. So right now, it's kind of a little weird. A lot of times, the family deductible is double the single. It's, right now, it's twenty-eight hundred, five thousand. You could make it three thousand, five thousand, so you don't impact the family. And the out-of-pocket max is thirty-five hundred, seven thousand, so that doesn't have to change. So from an employee exposure standpoint, really, their max cost on the Plan B doesn't have to change, but the deductible before it goes to the co-insurance needs to go from twenty-eight hundred to three thousand for them to be able to keep health savings accounts. So, you know, barring you wanting to make more wholesale changes, I would suggest, at a minimum, we plan on going to three thousand on the single deductible so that we are in compliance with that high deductible health plan statute.
So if we don't do that, we're not in compliance, then other things have to change within the plan itself?
Yeah, I mean, so we have a hundred percent plan, which I think is pretty simple and good for the employees. So after that deductible of, of twenty-eight hundred, the co-insurance on hospital, everything is a hundred percent planned, and then we just have copays on the doctor's office visit and drugs up to that thirty-five hundred. So if we were to want to keep the deductible we have, we would have to go to eighty-twenty on the co-insurance and a higher out-of-pocket. So if we want to keep the hundred percent plan and the thirty-five hundred out-of-pocket, we gotta take the deductible to three thousand. You could leave it the same. They just aren't gonna be eligible to contribute to health savings accounts anymore, which I think that sort of defeats the purpose of the Plan B. So my suggestion would be that you at least look at that two hundred dollar bump on the deductible.
So do we need to make a decision tonight, or do we wait until, until the plan renewal in, or sometime prior to the plan renewal?
Yes, I would just say that we're probably, Steel is gonna want all of our specific plan info about thirty days out. So I know you and I have a meeting next week to talk about open enrollment planning. So I would say whatever dates we decide to do open enrollment, we want to give Steel thirty days lead time to do plan build and make sure everything was ready. So, I mean, if you say you want to do that, you know, late April, then I would say in the next thirty days, it would be good to make the decision on what you want to do with that deductible so we can build plan designs.
Okay. Thank you.
Not making me feel warm and fuzzy, having to burden the employees with a little more, but?
I mean, the good news is, like, I mean, really, for, for someone who has something major happen, they're probably still only gonna spend thirty-five hundred dollars. I mean, the scenario that it would impact someone is if they spent exactly three thousand dollars only, they would pay two hundred dollars more out of their pocket than what they did in previous years. I would prefer that if I were the employee versus going to like an eighty-twenty with a higher out-of-pocket exposure. So, I mean, you can honestly look at the employees and say, we do not have a choice. The government says it has to be three thousand, so.
Yeah, an eighty-twenty would cost a whole lot.
Yeah.
That it?
That's it for me.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, department heads. What have we got here?
Butch.
I was gonna say. Butch? Yeah, you think?
I just have a question, Joe. Do you have a chance to move that? I have, yeah, I think it's good to be there. That's all.
All right. Memorial Park, you got anything?
Okay, uh, we're ready to go out for bids on the shelter house. And do we have to get you guys to approve that, or can we go ahead and do it?
I don't think, Joel, that we have to approve them putting this out to bid. They've already done the?
So no?
Yeah.
You guys can put it out for bids. You'll just, you'll need a scope of work for whoever's bidding.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay. And then once you get that, then you release it to whoever visiting.
Okay.
Probably get these three.
That's the change plan, I think. They voted on the ADA bathrooms upstairs.
And what's the proposed cost of this?
So for everything, including the structural part?
So they will have to get three bids.
Oh, yeah.
So for the structural repairs and the inside upgrades, as well as the ADA bathrooms, the total estimate cost, budget cost is two hundred and twenty thousand.
So three bids are required?
Yeah.
Because of that threshold?
And then I gave you guys a copy of our event schedules that were, the first half, we're still working on the second half. You guys are welcome to come out, enjoy some fun things. And then the second paper is the letter that's gonna go out for the fireworks, for the fireworks donations. So we'll be, we've been starting to get some donations in for the fireworks, but we're still needing some for this year. The total estimated cost with the fireworks and all the extra stuff is gonna be around forty thousand this year. And we did carry about ten thousand dollars from last year to this year, so. And then the only other thing was the, the contracts, but I think that's later on for the cannons.
Yes, yeah, we're gonna discuss that. My right, I've got a pair.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. I skipped you, Debbie. Do you have any?
Well, that just takes a whole lot out.
Well, I'm telling you.
We might be done by six-thirty.
Okay. Next up, we have the conditional deeds of gifts. I don't have to read all these, do I? Thank God.
That's why we were talking, there was something that was very long that I had to read. And I said, maybe he needed to, but no.
So basically, these are the personnel carrier, the armored M-59 series at the park, and the?
Howitzer.
Howitzer. Well, this here's the twenty-one centimeter, centimeter field Howitzer from eighteen ninety-one. And then the other one, where'd it go? The nineteen sixteen, two hundred and twenty millimeter field Howitzer that are apparently on loan from the Department of Defense. And apparently, we have filled paperwork out saying that we're still have them or taking care of them. So basically, all we need to do is agree that we still have them, right, Joel, or?
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially it. It says you can't convert it to actual weapon use. Some other conditions.
I have the pictures to upload, because he sent me that link, so I can upload these, or I can send it to you guys if you guys want to upload them. But I've got the pictures.
I never got a response back from him, so I assume he's communicating with you now.
Yeah, I forwarded you the email that he sent to me, and then there was a separate email, which just gives me a link to get into our documents, which is where we upload these. And then we have to have pictures of all three sides and then, or three of the sides, and then the pictures of the serial numbers. So I have all those on my computer, so I can upload them, or I can forward them to you guys, however you want to do it. I just need assigned copies to upload.
I was, none of us knew that those were on, we just assumed they were donated a hundred percent. We didn't know they were on loan until we, until the email.
Yeah.
A couple of weeks ago that Steve received, so.
Yeah, that was news to all of us.
Said that apparently we were out of compliance for about ten years.
Right, yeah. Which, we are guessing, when I talked to Gene Ingram, we're guessing that that happened when they moved the PC from the armory to the park. And that's why the ten, it's because it's been about ten years since they've moved that. So that's probably where that, this whole thing stemmed from, when they moved it to our property, so.
So, do I have a motion to accept these deeds of gift for the parts so that we can keep them?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Next on the itinerary is the Baker &amp; Tilly Advisory Services that we do every year. Do I have a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three zero. Now, under new business, I have several things here. We have a grant application for the Henry County Community Corrections and Veterans Treatment Court grant submitted by Joni Williams, grant number twenty-two-three dash zero zero two.
I will make the motion to accept the grant application and her to move forward on this for Veterans Treatment Court.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next, we have a letter from Lieutenant Governor Crouch. For those that you didn't know, we were graced by her presence at a conference, press conference here, that we were deemed broadband-ready county. And she gave a press release, which we can make available for anyone who wants to read it. I don't feel like reading the whole page-long thing, from her and from Denny Spinner, from the Deputy Director from Broadband Office for the Community of Rural Affairs, that thought it was a great honor for us to be broadband-ready. Opens us up for a lot of things here in the county. Hopefully, we get a lot of people better broadband services and federal funding to help make that happen. Next on the itinerary is, we own some property, point nine-five-eight acres, acre, out in front of Walmart. We're toying with the idea of putting it up for sale. Anybody got any discussion on that?
You know, it's where the old car wash was. You know, we're not utilizing it. It's not on the tax roll. I mean, you know, it's just sitting there. It makes sense to, as we have been reducing some of the properties that the Commissioners own over the last year or two, it makes sense to at least start this discussion of potentially putting this out to bid. Maybe, you know, something good will come of it instead of just an empty spot in front of Walmart.
I think we all probably have it appraised.
Yeah, I think we do have to, yeah.
Two opinions of value.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we reach out and get two opinions of value for this property, and then we can decide how we want to move forward after that.
I second.
I have a motion in a second. Get appraisals on said property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Next thing we have is approval of Sheriff Sproles' employment contract. Is there any discussion on that?
And then, Joel, you have reviewed this, I think, as pretty identical to the previous sheriff's contract.
You don't have any problems with it, Dan?
No, no issues with it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this contract?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next, we have a quote for a full HVAC system over in the Masonic Building on the third floor for the Purdue Extension Office. The unit over there apparently is twenty-eight years old and decided it didn't want to live anymore. Has a cracked heat exchanger. They gave us a quote for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the full system. Do I have a motion to accept this bid?
So moved.
Second. I think we've almost replaced every single furnace in.
Well, the sad thing is, there's one.
The last two years.
There's one beside it at the same age.
Oh, is it really?
But I didn't want to pull the trigger on that one yet. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. I have a couple of things that were penciled in. We just had Wright's Tree Service come up. They have a right-of-way out on Wilber Wright Road that, between three hundred north and two hundred north, they have some trees out there, six inches in diameter or less, that they're going to cut down and clean up the brush and get rid of it for us. It's in our right-of-way for their Duke Energy, for their poles. And we have finished an authorization slip that they need us to sign for that. Do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I have a mutual release agreement for, purchase agreement for the Hope Building. We thought we had it sold to Model Newell, and some of the preliminaries that went with it didn't pan out for her. So that agreement is expired, but we have to sign a mutual release form. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor signify? Motion in the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Do we do the agreement as well? We need to authorize the agreement.
You wanna authorize the other one? We do have a, I don't have a copy of that one with me. We have another offer on the Hope Building. Don't need to know how much.
Yeah, I think you do, get the official proof.
It's one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from MTB Home Furnishings. Do I have a motion to accept this offer?
So moved. Second.
And before you vote, you also make the acceptance, I know there was a counteroffer that Susan Neal put together, just changes a few of the terms in this.
Yes.
And you can prove that with the, you executed the counteroffer, which is kind of some costs and some allocation closing costs, things like that, but it's still the same purchase price.
So I'm gonna, uh?
You're gonna rescind your?
Rescind my motion and make a new motion to accept this offer as, along with the original offer, along with the counteroffer, that makes some changes to the original offer, for one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for, so, the Hope Building. What were your footers, the Hope Building?
I rescind my first second, add my second second.
Well, now that we're done rescinding and rescinding, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
And then you'll take that to the council tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Joel. And now we have the member for the Tourism Commission, we have two appointees, a Kenny Cox and Cheryl Tischner. They're recommended to be reappointed by the RDC. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Now I have an ordinance, twenty-two-three-dash-zero-two-dash-two-two, zero-zero-two, establishing the Henry County Indiana Land Bank.
Does he need to read this?
I don't think you need to read all of it.
Thank you.
Okay, seriously, he made me read everything.
I can give you summary, the city gas, all those establishing, and, and, with a lot of excess properties that are unused by the city, the city's acquire, ensures that the property has been sold to local owners primarily to take responsible care of the properties. There's a specific statute for city land bank, deals with a number of members, also one that authorizes the county bank, that has a specific heading for it, in that it's at least seven members up to nine, one's appointed by the treasurer, one's appointed by the auditor.
Oh, it's upside down?
One's appointed by the city dearest, one's appointed by the town of Little Town, one's appointed by the town of Nice Town, one appointed by the town of Spiceville, and then, one appointed by the town of Kenner, and then up to two additional directors as determined by the prior process. The county land bank function just like the city land bank, except it's all areas within the county except for the city dearest, so the properties, and then any towns, and it's now established without any taxes.
Okay.
And so this, or this ordinance will just establish a land bank, and then ones, persons are appointed by each respective bodies, can have an organizational meeting, not by the laws, and start the bunch.
Okay.
I will make the motion to accept the resolution.
Ordinance.
Or ordinance, excuse me, creating and establishing the Henry County Indiana Land Bank.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second, accept ordinance twenty-two-three-dash-zero-two-dash-two-two, zero-zero-two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Now I have resolution twenty-two-three-dash-oh-two-twenty-two, it's the same.
Oh, yeah, it's a different, it's twenty-two-three-dash-oh-one-eleven-oh-one.
Oh, one-eleven.
Oh, is it the same number?
Yep.
Yeah, they're kind of different, yes.
Oh, okay.
Same, they're the same number.
Same number, just different, okay.
So this is transferring interest in tax sales certificates to Newcastle, did you wanna speak on that, Mike, or?
Really, it's about the same thing we asked last time, I think there was eight properties on that list, and we went out, took, well, more properties available, but we went and looked to see what we thought was gonna be quick to get turned over and ask them for those eight properties. And I'm really glad the county's doing that, too, it's worked out well for the city, and if, if we can help out any way with the county, we'd be glad to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Been kinda slow the last two or three months, but we had one last, last meeting that we turned over, so.
All the version I have, it has seven properties.
Yes, I saw that.
I didn't, I didn't give you that. I think, I think that one has the eighth one, I didn't get it in, I think your binder had already gone across the street. Okay, that does.
I kinda had a last-minute addition to that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do I have a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Believe it or not, anything from the public? Going once, going twice, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn, accepted, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Well, got you out of here in thirty minutes.